Nine, five o'clock, twenty twenty four. And we have strictly knowledge that the land of which we are gathered is, you know, ceded traditional territory. Being a janitor for October ninth, twenty twenty four, we approved a circulated, Council Beach, Council Rich, all in favor? Thank you. May twenty twenty four be adopted. Thanks when you pay, Council Beach, all in favor? Okay, thanks. We're going to go into delegate. Welcome.
Put my bow up. I have to see you. On behalf of the Eagle Valley Golf Course. And I want council to consider a lot of things that are pending, and I know that council is extremely busy right now with everything that's going on. And I mean, we've got the wellness center going on, we've got the housing program that's going on, they see depression. Now, the reason that I, I'm trying to help break out is that town, I think would bring some benefit to, uh, Sycamore's. So just recently, now, there's a lot of money for charity. Jamie and the Sycamore Seals, and I'm calling us out that, and, um, and I think that the whole Now, the golf course is now operating about, um, financials here, but I don't want to share them with council at this particular time, but I just, there is a couple of things. And in British Columbia, there, there is thirty-four municipal all, uh, triggered and, and operated by the municipal run, but they, they, they lease them up, okay? And, um, uh, so and last year, okay, the Eagle Valley Golf Course had about four hundred was seventy thousand dollars and this is really important. Property taxes and also in wages about a hundred and thirty thousand dollars in order to offer. It isn't a losing proposition. Uh, one is Sycamore's, and I tell you, this is um, it is a tourist destination. We have post votes, we have the condoms along the probably sixty percent of the people that have come to Sycamore's come from Alberta or from Saskatchewan or some Eagle Valley Golf Course and make it so that it's beneficial to this particular community. Municipalities own their own golf courses. So this is the plan. For the district and Sycamore's to buy this golf course. And certainly can do a municipal golf upside when it comes to supporting not only, uh, the, uh, the, the people of this community, as you can see. I would say that most of these people are part of this, uh, this conversation because they want to see there is three thousand feet of river frontage. So what I see into Sycamore's, I could see all kinds of different things that could happen that could be beneficial to Sycamore's people that would use the golf course, and I think it would be beneficial to Sycamore's that also must grow in the future. So I want you to think about this. I want Eagle Valley Golf Course is at a frame. Since COVID came, everything just dried up. Property, but now it's kind of opening up a little bit more. Um, I think that, um, I think that since when I was the mayor, I thought that Eagle Valley Golf Course could be very beneficial to, to, uh, to the Sycamore's. And I know that council is, I mean, there's, I looked at the agenda and I think I hold it out, I got booted down with this particular so much on the agenda, and you guys are missing, and I'm telling you, I have nothing but respect for the entire law of you at the future of Sycamore's. Why is it? It is a tourist town where, uh, I think talking to, um, how we can work with this through the, uh, the, uh, the AAP process the community in order to support this. At the same time, I'm not so sure, I mean, it's up to you in order to make this happen. If we were to, um, purchase it, there's an alternative. Okay, okay, kind of about twenty minutes, there is a train coming through there, so you can't hear anybody that's Eagle Valley Court Golf Course as something that could be utilized for the, the, the objective on purpose. Things that you could do with that golf course that will benefit the community. Now, and if you wanted to go after the taxpayer, although the golf course is in a, um, zone. But if you went to the AAP process, it would cost approximately about twenty five twenty-five dollars a year, maybe, you know, depending on what you want to put down on it, but, uh, it could the district of Sycamore's is right now, but, but there is a lot of things that have been supported by the P C government, the federal government beneficial to the community. So I want you to think about this. I want you to think about how that's put together, and I hope that you wouldn't change it from a golf course, uh, you know, you, you could have Sycamore's used to be all campaigns, but now there's no campaigns are at all, so it could be a without particular land base because, because it is agriculture around base, it's a council. It's not, it's, it's, it's very, very hard for anybody on the edge of the land base. So I've given up a lot of your time, um, an asset, not not, it's not anything but the you can have all kinds of, you can have wedding, you know, I mean, what we're trying to do and what we're trying to do to Sycamore's right now land base and, uh, and, uh, we're trying to grow the community. Now, I really recommend, I really have to say that it's just incredible how we've accelerated. Anyway, uh, financials, I, I don't want to give this to anybody at this particular time. Uh, they're very confidential. Do you think that, um, you're, uh, interested in, and, 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 and this particular, uh, um, then I think it's something that you really should
The presentation, um, any quick questions from council? Council McCain?
Um, what's the B C?
Terry? Terry, what's the B C assessment and the asking price for the golf course?
Six million right now. Okay, and, uh, but, uh, that's based on land base, okay, so there's golf carts and there's the, the house and, uh, there is, uh, right now, and, um, good, um, so I think the value of the golf be somewhere around two point two, two point three.
So I think that's what Council McCain was asking, just for the assess-
Okay, now, I, I think that, um, um, I think that if, if we had somebody to take over the value of something, okay, okay, somewhere off that.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. More question?
Let's do the chair, yeah, just, uh, I want to thank you for coming, Terry, and presenting, it's, uh, great to see you back in council chamber, and, uh, also council chamber, so it's good to see councillors and mayors come back to council chamber.
All right, good, Council Rich.
We have, uh, idea, and I, I think there is a lot of potential there with that golf, golf course. Maybe something along that.
Thank you. Okay, thanks, Terry. Okay, all right, and moving on. We've got another de- uh, the best key boathouse location, welcome.
Uh, hi, thanks, I'm just listening, my friend, the other two, uh, same court, and thank you for getting this on the agenda so quickly, um, at such short notice, that we just found we received a letter in response to it, um, giving our approval, um, as owners, and so I questions, questions, um, that would have been answered if the decision-making process would have been a significant, um, property tax to this, this district, we were not included in that decision-making. Environmental studies went, um, given that everybody on the channel, right, how has to redo their docks to sort of standards, how does this fit in as well? How does this impact the public dock that is full during the summer months with people coming in and doing day trips? Taking off the dock, the hub of activity of people walking to the end of the landing and sitting on the bench and looking out, but does this impact the views, or was Mulligan's So, um, speaking along the day of this Mulligan's, this two-story structure, how impacts that view? From what I can gather based on the renderings, we have about a four or five meter clearance from the one end of our dock, sort very large boat, people be navigating around that, so I'm confused as how that fits into the environmental. There's so many questions that we have traffic, you know, the channel traffic in terms of emergency response, how does that affect trees on that, um, as well as now, that was all community-based questions, I'm gonna get now, we have a two-story structure that will impede and change the views of some properties. So how does that impact us, and has that been taken into consideration? So I'm just standing here asking all these to see, um, if we can have some more answers. Now, I want it very clear that being one hundred hundred percent, there is no question about that, it's needed, there's been many, um, instances where it's, it's been very beneficial. And more so, how the decision was made without consolidating, like considering our situation. So, any of that, I just know that nobody knew about it, we had to sign a letter to approve it, which we did not. Pretty open, um, I don't think there's really much more, other than it, I, I still think, like, what's what's the channel where you're going eight corners an hour, and we have all the congestion and everything, it's a huge structure, like, I've seen it, like, it's just been over town now. I'm just here asking those questions. Um, and I don't think I have anything else, I mean, I couldn't keep going. I think YouTube on it and everything, um, on the data, there might not just say it's done, how did this get approved through administrative issues, when everyone touch our pilots? So I'm just curious as to how this all came about. Thank you, Les.
You have the chair?
Uh, yeah, uh, Les, thank you very much for your delegation today.
Then you have to remember that this Sycamore's channel has been a working channel for, uh, its inception, um, it was commercially, uh, eleven host boat companies on the channel at one time, so it is, uh, you got to understand that it is a working channel, um, we've, we've, we've structure that's in the channel was more beneficial being in the channel than in Old Town Bay because of the, uh, response time for them to get to Old Town Bay town or public boat launch, when, uh, they're, they're dealing with, uh, dealing with people, so it, it's a tough call, um, you know, we're doing away with one so, uh, it's, I, I think it's very, very, very important for the community and the, and for the surrounding area, CSRD and the lake system to have, uh, how we got here, um, you know, I guess it was all ran through the public process and went through First Nations, and, uh, it is, uh, it is already a four again, we can, you know, be here all day debating it, but yeah, I understand your concerns and questions, and I guess we do have to, you know, look into some of them, and
Thank you, we have a couple of minutes here that we can, so I know I agree with you in terms of privacy, but if you're sitting on a deck of Mulligan's, you're gonna, you're gonna get the yes, after that one, um, as well as, just again, I just want to, more so again, the boat medication and process, nobody forced to do the water. I don't look pretty close to nine months to a year in this, in council, and, um, so, um, it's, um, that land tenure, if we've looked at other locations to put the boathouse in, the, uh, location in Old Town Bay is like to the light boat, you're dealing with the folks that are operating that boat, you're dealing with train crossing, you're dealing, it's with a forty K Yeah, they're in authority, it's not, it's not ideal, so the location that we found that would be most beneficial twelve to thirteen, um, uh, slips for day use, all of the studies have been done, the patients and any, uh, archaeology, um, issues that they had, the district has moved over, so the, the pro- unfortunate that they're just hearing about it now, but, um, at this point, the idea is what it is, and it's an essential service for Sycamore's. Very quickly, our channel's really important to us, so this is definitely an essential service in our community, so, um, yeah, that's why um, Council B C, do you want to add anything to that?
No, I'll get you guys some more. Certainly, I'm putting in stuff thing on it, and, and it's fully supported, it's just a location as for us wasn't ideal, and we called enough, or we didn't care about it, or whatever it is, but it was just, um, yeah, something that is going to impact fully understand it, um, and appreciate the time, Kate, you guys, to hear me out, thank you, thanks for being here today, okay.
Boat Society, if you, you know, maybe they can answer a few more of your questions, if, like, if, okay, let's move on. Department updates, we're going to recreation update, Jamie, did you want to take the right call, twenty twenty four?
Everybody, been a while since I've been to council, so I'm just going to give you a little snippet of what we've been working on, uh, since our last So, as you can see on that first slide there, that is our time, our master shafts program that we have this summer, we had eight little ones that fixed to sloppy jogos and the, uh, deck, we all have our own little, uh, aprons there, so it was a really well-received program, and we could have done kitchens, it's, which is pretty awesome. So that was one of the many weeks that we hosted this summer, so over the course of the summer, we hosted four different programs from our golf lessons, from our ladies and youth programs, we had average, uh, five people per week, but some weeks we'd seen up to twelve, some weeks we'd seen three, depending on the weather, um, or summer camp, so seventy-two participants in order to break even for staffing costs, and we managed to get sixty more, so I'll take that as a small victory for us, for the swim lessons, but we just were a little shy, but I'll take the victory for the fact that we actually had one adult who is muted Canada, who took an opportunity if you're gonna live upon the lakes, so I'm hoping that is the start of more adult programs that we have moving forward. Okay, so let's see how it's working, so we wanted to see if we were reading the with the help of Captain, we have put together a post, um, program survey, we wanted to know about our program, what they like, how would they hear about the program, the number one response is our, our rec guide, people love to go to a rec guide, they come in and ask for it, and we're able to rock programs and all the other various programs that we have, our seniors, doctors offices, and then the bottom slide is how do you like our programs, so that tells us that we are to do something good when it came to our summertime programs, so our top rating there, you see, says our summer recreation program was great and admitted, and we appreciate the fact that this district decision is still offering programs which provide an opportunity to be a part of your community, it would be that three hours is enough time for the kids, and the kids love being in the program, and they have lots of energy to burn, I attest to that. That three hours is enough time for the kids and the kids love being in the program and they have lots of energy to burn. I attest to that. A six hour pro. Options and so utilize it as a huge piece. It changes the way the meeting.
Let us take a stop for a second. Can we shut the door and there. Thank you.
So this air thanks us for all the efforts that we've done and they're very interested and they're hopefully coming that we're gonna offer in the fall as they'll be. After he took the time to truly provide feedback. He was enthusiastic and engaging, truly seemed to care. He corrected performance speed, all key factors of swimming. We are truly impressed. So that's a true testament of the instructors that we've had over the summer months. So we're gonna touch on some of the events that. Uh, service performers, we had a local band up on stage and of course we talked about with their fire dicks. But looking into twenty twenty five, we know. The access points. So we wanted talking with, with um DS Daryl, um, talking about how we could look at. The daytime events. The daytime nighttime events doesn't really capture the same as what we do with the daytime. So that's something that we need to look at and how we can improve. Did on the August on weekend and co staff with the Chamber of Commerce and Visitor Information Center. As you can see, we got new Daryl in there. He would prepare. Again, which was awesome. Got to know her pretty well, but this, this event for the last couple of years has definitely been in the decline and I think that's due to. And so we'd like to revamp this and make this a true event as the spirit that it was put into for an event that's supposed to be for our community members. Bring back to probably in the winter update with some ideas of what we'd like to do. And then we go hosted a pirate night with the, with the. In twenty twenty five, like our cyber art, writing pirate days, things like that, families placing like that. We get a lot of tourists that participate in that. So what's next? Coming up, we have our half main party. Can share with them, we're partnering with the Eagle Valley Arts Council. Very empty. So I would rather move to a smaller venue or less full, more activities for kids to do the arts council. We're very eager to get on. Of October twenty four, twenty six from three to four o'clock. I'll be asking any council members, we're looking for costume judges. So if you'd like to be there, we. Is my favorite event of the year, the Christmas light up and parade is gonna take place on December seventh, starting at five thirty. We're looking to improve. A little bit different format instead of being so congested at high school. We're gonna look at marshalling everybody down. I think it'll make it for a nice easier transition. When the slide was put together, we had, had confirmation by now because you have the holiday train which is confirmed for Tuesday, February. So we'll be doing some announcements, working on that because we've got some logistics to work out with the, with bridge construction and stuff moving forward. So. I also can be there. So. So lots of times when I get up here and I present to everybody, I was presenting with our besties. So. Okay, ten percent of the time can be significantly challenged. So some of the challenges that we're still facing, we have faced or new challenges are. Sometimes we swing for the park or swing for fences and we get the home run. There's sometimes we foul it, which is kind of what's happened in this. We definitely have higher senior population, which everybody knows that we are on fifteen comes for a lot of those. So trying to find programs that. Just to work it on it. A limited population means that we are all fighting for the same people. So whether it's minor hockey, minor ball. And so sometimes we're trying and we try hard not to compete with them, but we have limited spaces, limited people, you're pulling from the same. Into, you know, it's a thing that they're literally for spaces because we're all trying to fight over the same locations to run all of our same group, all of our program. We're working more together and so we're leaving a lot of that. So we're making sure that we're not doubling up. We're not running yoga programs at the same time. We're not running art programs at the same. Create offering options for the community. We still have a shortage of program instructors and contractors, but. Other phone calls saying, hey, I'm interested in running this type of program in your community. So, you know, so the last, the last year I probably had about four or five. The location, price, times, things like that. Um, daytime facilities, we've talked now numerous times about that. That's not. Tips, but now that our population is growing and our families are growing, I now lose it out to the kids' volleyball, the kids' basketball, whichever. Times our YouTube groups that are coming to some of our programs don't necessarily get it, which are the same exactness that I'm doing it and. The challenges that we have. And then when we come to event related difficulties, you know, we all know volunteer programs is an issue to. Right to be open on the volleyball as well. And then staffing for beds, so they. For again, they play some all the weekends and it's really hard to ask. Base that we can maybe look at some events and change some of the events. So with every challenge, I look for the solutions. So where do we. A couple of years ago, it's time to go back out and find out what we're doing well and where we're missing the mark. So how do we do this? We'll engage in some surveys. Is one of our programs, one of our events, one of our facilities. We wanna see where we're hitting the mark and where we're missing it. We wanna have. We wanna go to the seniors, we wanna go to the schools, we wanna talk to the kids, we wanna know what they wanna do, what we wanna see. When we check the families, we wanna work with other. Sycamore's and where we can improve because we can't get better unless we hear from them. We wanna continue working with our tourism partners. So that would be with the Chamber. And we've got the biggest, not the least, but I'll turn the backyard all the time. We know that we are gonna be a national event in twenty twenty five, but what else can we. Community, looking at talking to the longer sports. If we're looking some more events that are brought in and we just. This time. And then of course we learn from other communities. So being a part of the BCPRA, we can learn from them, we can gather support, we can get. Answers, one of them calls and simply sometimes just taking out the door and going, hey Karen, you know what, what if I say. So what I have here is what, what the goals of recreation I still should be for the district to stick with. But the district to. And events, we strive to provide programs, events that are safe and fun environments and are, are welcome to all with. While recognizing that recreation is essential to the overall and hopefully well being to the citizens of Sycamore's. And without the. We just brought in the sled copy from Triad Dave. The response is overwhelming to the point where we were on a Zoom call, we're still available. I said, hold up, stack up the busters, do things at least. So we are looking at implementing a potential ten week. At the designated ice time, there is money available for affordability to be able to actually do a starter program to help cover. As well as coaching time to start with, as well as sleds, because each one of these sleds costs seven hundred fifty dollars. So jackets are. Reaching out to the Shishaw Community Foundation, we'll be reaching out to Sycamore's region and a few other partners to see if you can get this going. So that way we could actually. Twenty six, so a full fledged program where it's a user case. So nobody really hopefully coming out of the district sickness, but somebody that we can. Or striving for. So how do we achieve our goals for twenty twenty five? First of all, we need to ask the community. If someone sends us, you know. Has a wish list of some of the things that they want. So we need to educate them as to, hey, if you want this, are you prepared to have this go on your tax forms? That we want. And of course, I think the most important thing is you work towards a common goal. So you find that one thing that the community wants to back. So the city of Vancouver, they went after the, the uh month of June as participation map or participation, sorry, they. Went after Canada's most active community. And so you do a campaign and you explain to people, you get them registered, you get them autot, you get them. All those minutes are logged. So you think about everybody's going on paddle boarding, their weight boarding, their, their, their skiing, water skiing, you know, they're out walking, they're. Most active community. And then we work towards that common goal as to what it is that we wanna use that funds for. So that's just me. This is what Daryl had tasked me a while ago to do is to see what other communities are doing. So what we did is we reached out to find out who recently. One of the most common uh ones to us or compared one to us was the city of Oliver. And so they provided us with their entire. We all, we've already got some stuff that we can pull from there. We asked outside of traditional funding sources, does anyone have some suggestions and. Talk about an outdoor break. And so we found that pretty much everybody is looking for that secret bottle. We all know that for every project that we do within the district. You guys, where the funds are raised are designated to your recreation department. And if so, what type of site, what type and size of events have been hosted? Like a comedy night or something like that, where they make a pocket of four or five thousand dollars and they can use that funds for water jets, where they can use it to put. Or they have the opportunity where families can apply for funding to accumulate at each, you know, per year that they get, kind of with line stuff and stuff needs to do. Sometimes make a break, one of our programs is operating. So this would be something that I'd definitely be open to. The other option that some of the communities. Some list where if you donated so much money, you've got your name on the track and a plaque this size or a plaque this size. And those are all things that we could actually do. Made through that funding pool and that order that could be between some project. So it was really great to reach out to somebody in the community to see what they're doing. Voice. Sometimes you can learn something from somebody else that we go, oh, I never thought of that. So that's why for this, so we forgot. Recreation for twenty twenty five. And I hope there's any questions. Thank you, Jamie. Answer evidence.
It's a challenge and you're, you're, uh, you're doing a great job. Jamie, I want to ask a question. Only from three to six hours for kids care in L. The Kids Kingdom is doing a summer kids program too, right?
Eight now to believe by thirty now, our program here will be in a daytime, like a nine to three type. So the. They need one day of meat or it's their grandparents. Like I have tons of grandparents that brought their kids and signed them up because they got their kid, grandkids for meat. Daycare structure.
Like the one that Kids Kingdom.
Right? This is a day camp, an art camp, a day camp, very similar to what Cologne, Salmon are, predicted all of it. Offer funding, we don't offer subsidy. This is strictly a camp where they come in, like our most popular camp this year was the amazing race. The kids had. Uh, they went to what the wolf and they, they found the clues and then they had to find their secret spot. So totally different, totally separate from the daycare. To, we haven't got a great flush of the hours yet, but it would be different than what is offered at a traditional daycare site.
Thank you. The three hours that we did.
We charged a hundred dollars.
For not just the amazing grace, but amazing grace per week.
What is expensive, we charged a hundred and fifty dollars.
Right.
We take all that into consideration based on what activities they are participating.
So the amazing.
Team.
Yeah. And that was five mornings, five mornings.
Five, yeah, it was five mornings. Yeah.
Okay.
Sweet tip, we tried to do. Uh, once you hit that ten mark and kids weren't, kids weren't signing up, they weren't going.
They're too cool.
I could have easily done two.
Top of your head, do you know how much they charge for uh one day of childcare at the Kids Kingdom?
They don't.
They don't?
No, they're small one day.
Oh, to send your kids there. I guess we'll look into that.
I know that the structure is either you go five days a week.
Yeah.
This opening.
Yeah.
And you can go three days a week, it's Monday, Wednesday, Fridays, which isn't always used to what, what working parents have.
Flying with the man. It was like you wanna have a conversation.
Yeah, yeah, I'm sorry.
Okay, no worries. Any other counselors have any questions?
Uh, after, after you lost the uh, the uh after school club, you seem like you're pretty busy. Yeah, I know.
Excellent. Anyone else? Can we just do chairs?
Your, your excellence in this coordination, exploration department. Thank you. Department. Thank you.
They're wanting to dispatch names, but which one of the people plan uh permanently out of words? And they, they think the next. For two, it's the old Daryl because now new Daryl.
Fifty S. Okay, so.
Okay.
First, we've got an abundance of goals. A couple of bricks walked in here and slipped into the back. I don't want to put them on the squad, but we've got. Sorry, we wanted to shoot. So they're here, they have tested interest in this, they've been a tremendous downhill, I mean a lot of recent.
Yes.
We've got a lead engineer that's been navigating with us on behalf of us.
One minute. I'm just kidding, Bartek in the corner. Okay, you're good.
Okay, so the registration process, as we know, we're going through the slow waste water registration process with the province. That's the environment. So the key comes on.
Yes.
And they go on.
And so you go on. Okay, so the. Mental impact studies, uh monitoring the environment, management plans, very comprehensive process. Partially staffed myself and then we've got some specific um designations through StanTech that are helping us. All their experts. Some of our targets are obviously to increase our primitive capacity. Next step is for projected growth. Today, sorry I put these in boxes now because there's. There's been lots of back and forth with them in building out an information requirement table. So thirty one items that they want to see in specific. Customize that information requirement table so we get the best information coming back to appease the province and to. So. So the monitoring plan uh that we are contemplating, what we're committing to on that information requirement table. Just be operate today, but this plan is much more robust. We're going to have more monitoring to a much higher level. For new contractors being looked at from the province, uh and and regulators are looking at things like nitrites and ammonia and things that were never listed. Uh and we're going to look very closely at uh the phosphorus that's in our plants. It's probably the most. Things that we have to achieve a certain level of. And um it's these guys and their their. To me and told me they've reached out to other communities and there's lagoons over there, you know, all over the place that aren't. No requirement for it. So we asked the province about that. And you know, as per the letter of the law, we're not a direct discharge. They don't know why we're being looked at for the phosphorus. So it has a really big impact on everything we do. Because of the phosphorus, we've. Or so we've got lots of costs that we're occurring because of that. Uh the recent plant upgrades. Can I help lead us through that? Uh really quick review here, we had a headworks building that was in, built. Figuring out generator. The upgrades cost two point two million. It was like I said. If that, we uh we requested an increase in the capacity. So at that time, we were eleven hundred and forty eight cubes per. Policy, they would give us ten percent until this process was completed. So that's why we're here today, just to keep this moving along. Well, we like to begin the spent monitoring plan. It's all laid out, uh ready to go. The province is happy. Number of weeks we had, but it's going to be kind of a longitudinal study, about two over twelve months. So the sooner we get this going, the better. The high strength waste, the the truck waste, uh we'll look at the RIVs, the information basins, the liners. Yeah, very carefully. So we're ready to get going. We have a couple of goals, obviously, in the near term, we want to look at getting it. Return plan would be to make sure that whatever components or changes that we're making in the short term, they mesh well with long term plans. So I've got a four slides kind of in the middle of all this, where I'm just going to turn this over to Bartek, who's the lead engineer for StanTech. Are you there, Bartek?
Thank you, Daryl. Uh can you hear me?
I'll turn you off.
Okay, the sound on my end is coming in and out. So if I lose you or you lose my audio, uh you know, don't be surprised, it's been happening. I'm both on my cell phone and on a computer, so we'll try to make it work. Uh so thanks for the invite. And yeah, as Daryl mentioned, uh we have to go in multiple environments here to satisfy uh their requested information. Uh from the province. So basically, we're going to monitor the groundwater elevation and quality, and I'll show you in the next slide where the existing wells are. So we're going to reuse the existing wells. We have to also monitor the river, uh both for uh elevation as it impact the uh elevation of the groundwater. And and on quality, both upstream and downstream, or where the potential uh dilution zone is. We're going to have to estimate what this initial dilution zone is. This is from our measurements uh and work on the uh. Uh on the wells, to the existing wells. Uh so we're going to have to create a three D model of this initial dilution zone and predict the impact of that initial dilution zone. On the environment. So again, both groundwater and river come into play. Uh we will also take a look at point and nine point sources. That uh are affluent from the facility may be affecting it. Could be, you know, recreational um beaches, it could be wells, it could be other sensitive environments in the area. We're going to have to uh basically figure out uh where they are, you know, how many there are and what the impact is uh from our facility. And wrap it all up in in the um environmental impact assessment study. That's going to be an overarching report that will summarize everything to the province. And I have to say, I'm not sure if Daryl mentioned that, uh there's been no study like this in the area or specifically at this facility. So this is going to be the first study. So we have. A very little baseline or or some past information as far as the affluent quality or the influence quality, but. The remaining information is going to be fairly new. We have to collect it. Over at minimum twelve months and we've also prepared the sampling plan, which I will present in the next few slides. Um so we can move on to the next slide unless there's any questions, feel free to to ask if it's, you know, uh so I won't forget here. But basically what you see here, uh this image shows you the wastewater facility. You can see the. Big areas are lagoons and then the square areas are uh infiltration basins. There are existing wells that are installed, are actively actively being monitored. So we're going to reuse these wells. Uh we will also are planning on installing physometers to monitor the height of the. Or the elevation of the groundwater. Um there is a limitation or certain restrictions or how far this groundwater have to be. Uh or or if there's a distance between the infiltration basins and the groundwater level. So we're doing that for that. And like I mentioned, we're going to be creating a model of of the groundwater in the area to create. The um dilution zone. Okay, the next slide. Uh so we've proposed twelve months of sampling. This is at the same time, the minimum that the province requested. Uh the sampling alone or the analytical portion, what we send the samples to the lab, they do the analysis, they send us the results. That's going to be about hundred thousand dollars. That's spread over twelve months. Uh this includes both sampling of groundwater and river as well as influent and effluent. So portion of that influent and effluent is currently also being um monitored by the district. So hopefully there is some. Uh possibility to optimize these costs. Uh there are certain parameters that we may also measure at the beginning, uh which, you know, if they don't show any, any. Um results there or any meaningful concentrations, we may may simply stop sampling for that. We'll be in chats with the province to agree on 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 the sampling after the initial sampling uh for about two to three months. Uh. The capacity of the infiltration basins uh is a limiting factor. So more important than ever to monitor how it impacts the groundwater uh elevation and and concentrations. The soils, which was known from the beginning when the first report was issued in mid nineties that the soils are not the most suitable. Um we've come a long, a long way, but uh we may have to upgrade the infiltration basin moving forward as well. The uh uh cost for engineering and reporting and modeling and developing, you know, all this data into a format that's usable by the province is two hundred and twenty seven thousand dollars. Uh I've mentioned it to Daryl many times that these studies are not simple, they're very complex, they take a long time. Uh typically, the prices that we've seen are two hundred thousand dollars and above, sometimes significantly above when the sampling is, you know, like a marine outflow or something like that, that can that can cost upwards of a hundred thousand dollars alone. So no surprise here, we're we're kind of in the in the middle or or low range of the typical costs for for this type of analysis. Uh let's go to the next slide. Uh that just basically is our sampling plan and cost that we've developed in the uh recent months. Uh on the left side or sorry, on the right side, the graphic shows you the full scan of the samples that we're going to be collecting and analyzing for. So there's influent, effluent, groundwater and um river. That was sent to the uh province, they looked at it, so they're aware of what we're sampling and it meets their uh request. On the left side, you see an estimate for the cost. This is just the minimum cost at this point. Uh it's about ninety five thousand dollars. So as I mentioned, around hundred thousand dollars need to be set aside for the sampling alone. Next slide.
Uh that's it for you.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so I'll just do a little bit of a summary here. We have a low, it's a provincial requirement, we need to do this. Uh Stan. Uh robust and give us the best information for options going forward. Uh and a high level of analysis keeps those doors open. Uh with current proposed developments, there's an urgency for this. And we've got some good history. provincial staff as well. So you know, I'm I'm proposing that we stay the course. It's it's a big purchase that requires. Fair size of money here, so it'll come later tonight. I'll uh I'll be bringing it forward for. So this two twenty seven for the engineering component of this. I will say that we're going to do. Relax some of the sampling as we go forward. Some of these things are not showing up. Uh we might be able to limit some of the sampling back. Alarming for a hundred twenty five thousand dollars just for the. So that'll come forward tonight. I just want to give you. These guys are myself.
Thanks, Daryl. Counts.
And we gave it with solid money to be paying for these studies when we actually had a study done by StanTech that said. Given that by the province. And so now we have to go through all of this. Correct me if I say anything that's wrong. We have to go through all of. Future capacity increase. We have to spend two hundred and twenty seven thousand dollars on more studies. A twelve month.
Mostly, yeah, I'll give the sheriff. The study or the the request stemming from. Once we put in place, we put a request into the province saying. We're requesting two thousand cubes a day. To go through this registration process that looks at all the environmental impacts that we're interacting with. Put it up against the new goalposts, so the new parameters that they're measuring, they're measuring by. And and then. So it's not an automatic, you're you're exactly right. It's a twelve month process. It's a lot of money, but it's it's a requirement that they're saying that. And granted, this is the next step. We have to, we have to go through these thirty one items to satisfy.
And and I. It's not, not even, they they just say, well, this won't really do based on our regulations. And this is the effect that it's going to cost us this much. And that's the frustrating part is that the choices to tighten the screws on these regulations is going to cost. And then the answer might be, uh right, and or you have to do another step or actually a regulation. And I think that is, I mean, we talked about this on this council table a lot about what is being done by the province that is. This is just another example of where somehow. We're going to have to put these resources there where. Or that said that this plant was capable of it, they didn't stop that. Um and so now we're we're back.
Or that said that this plant was capable of it. They didn't accept that. Um, and so now we're we're back, but, you know, it's. It's a bunch of BS. And I just think it's it's, you know, the province at some point has to be accountable would be a. Things. And I don't think there's a public good to it. I really don't.
Thank you. Yeah, you're right. Councillor Bushell.
And um, this is what they're all talking about is trying to eliminate red tape. And this is a prime example of red tape. Um, it looks a lot like. Why not? He should build a retaining wall that will not even work in our channel. And he's never even been to our channel to see how it flows. Relations um that are totally, I mean, yeah, sure, studies, you're gonna find some new information, but they're not really required. So. Your hands are tied, but this is a little red tape um government problem that all municipal buildings are facing.
Yeah, I was thinking, Chair, I just feel like we've been really used as kind of a study to see ground here, so. And then other communities can convince them by it. Um, I I wonder if there is a. A perspective that we can have in terms of trying to filter more. Um. We've got a. Yes, and I always wonder if you can look at at creating a natural filtration. I know it would take, it would take increasing the height of the wells so that it can get movement of water, but. Um, other than increasing our infrastructure and spending all our money on that, because nature will. The filtration will naturally be nourished and it will keep doing a better job of filtration. So I. Start seriously at using our natural environment to actually provide some cleansing power weeks. Good, yeah, good, yeah. So I'm throwing it out there. So um, I just want to toss this at um Bartek. Like, is there, like, we, I know what they're, can you hear me?
Bartek, are you there?
I'm here, but I can hear you every maybe third, fourth word. It's cutting out continually.
Any way we can cut down the cost?
I have a question and I will try to answer if you can hear me better.
The question is, Bartek, is there any way that we can cut some of these costs out of this two twenty seven?
So, uh. Difficult for me to answer because. When we did that, we looked at the provincial requirements and we basically tried to answer all the questions that they've asked us. So if the province is willing to maybe relax some of the requirements, we would be able to relax it as well. The plan was to do about three months of sampling this year. And look at creating a draft report to see if there is any bottlenecks or any red lights that we'd have to chat with the province immediately. After the three months. We were hoping to reduce the number of sampling or some of the analysis that we'd be performing, some of the emerging contaminants, for instance. Were uh confident that we're not gonna find any of that uh any or influence. So we wanted to eliminate it. So I would think that if there's any savings, we could potentially realize it after the first three months of sampling and after writing a draft report. And after chatting with the province.
Through the chair, that was kind of the best plan.
Yeah, okay. Anyone else have any questions? Again, I I totally, I'm sorry, Councillor, I totally agree with you. I I think the province is. We're, you know, um, pretty environmentally aware here and, you know, we cross our Ts and dot our Is and it's. Bears for sure. So um, hopefully in this election. We'll see some changes. Um, and uh.
Yeah, I just wanna add that you're not an isolated community. In the last three, four years, I had at least two examples of smaller communities. That was even more burdensome on them to go through this process. And the province essentially decided not to continue with permits, but push everybody into this registration under municipal wastewater regulation. That initial cost is high for most places. Once you do update five, ten, twenty years later on, it will probably be easier. But if nothing's been done like this in your community, yeah, the cost is pretty high.
Councillor.
Yeah, I mean, again, all provincial choices, right? Like, they can choose to do something different. They didn't. Right? It doesn't just, you know, move the dial. We've been we're saving the planet earth on this. These are regulations that they chose or. We touched on the phosphorus and that we're getting, you know, drilled down. We got where the regulations. Like, both and 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 uh, where are they basing that on? Just because they think it would be nice to the chair? It's a great question. From returning from a conference and speaking to everyone they could on lagoon systems. Uh, yeah, they found out. Being, it's not one of the the parameters that being measured by. So it was a question, it was my first question, Bob, when they came on site, why are. She said, you know, that's the way it was written up when this plant got built in the nineties, and it's always been at this level. Why it was included? Let's see if it's even warrants monitoring or. Yeah, yeah, it sounds like some people think it shouldn't be, but the. Uh, it says, how much is that costing us to do something that's not even in the regulations, but that we're doing because we're fear. Right? Yeah. So through the chair. I wouldn't go so far as to say it's not even within the regulations because it is a requirement for us right now. Costing us is almost impossible to say because we're spending a lot of money on chemicals to 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 have like a coagulant. Removed and trapped. So it spins off. It's one of our biggest costs for sure. So do we have an estimate of what? Costs? Yeah. Yeah, well, we know, we know the chemical costs have increased since we went to a new product to hammer down phosphorus. Everything we can to to achieve, right? And so there's been years of not quite making the phosphorus number. Now we're using a. Twenty year for the chemicals, probably down, probably two twenty. So probably a hundred grand in chemical. We had to get the lagoon clean. It would go ten years. Now it's gonna be similar here. That's fifty, right? Yes, yeah, so maybe you think all that's. I thought there's much swatch. So we're gonna need to either build out a drying bed or remove phosphorus components. So it's just, it spins. Yeah, the sooner we can figure out whether or not we can remove that component, the better. Okay, thanks, Derek. Okay, I think that was it. Uh, yeah, I think my last slide just said, I mean, coming tonight for.
Councillor.
Uh, yeah, so this has been into the next. So we go dirty water. So before we.
Clean water.
That's clean water. Before we can do this or this, we need to run our lake water through this. Okay, these are. That's essentially what they are. They cartridges, they membranes, we call them. Okay, and we've got an ultrafiltration. The plants, and they serve as a barrier for bacteria, viruses, other contaminants. We're at a point zero two micron level, which means. Who isn't here today? Our water treatment plant, who's running, but she must be busy. Uh, he wanted. Spending particles going through and then the permeability of the membranes uh to the five long removals. So that's five digits, ninety nine. It's it's super, super clean and clear. It only allows fresh water and salt minerals pass through in the plants and most. Each one of these banks, they call it a train. So a train has a pair of membranes on each side of the permeate header, so a double rope. I'm training two, training three. They each have forty eight membranes making up that train. We have one more. And this one has eighteen cartridges at the back. The job of this one is to take, so the water. So it will clean itself so that water that's stuck on the membranes ends up coming to here. So this thing just cleans the the dirty one. There's eighteen of those membranes. They get worked a lot harder because there's less of them and it's they're doing the dirty water. They send the clean product back to the raw water tank. So long story short, we're ninety eight percent efficient in that plant. This is processing guy. Okay, so this little graph here just illustrates life of the dirty water filters. Kind of the shape of the membranes. You have three lines at the top. These are the three trains. And this is over a five year period. And the in the the quality of the trains is going down ever so slightly. This second stage train. And they're getting all the dirty water. So they're working harder and they're starting to give up. And since it's over five years, it's not alarming. We expect. In membranes, we knew that they were gonna last probably seven to ten years is what we were told. We're at year ten now, okay? And so. Gentle on them and it looks like we'll get another seven years out of maybe ten years. So the membrane life varies by orders. We're gonna do much better on our primary trains. We put a reserve fund in place for membrane replacement, not a production membranes or a break rate. Train or uh filters that do the dirty water. It's nearing the end of life. Okay, so here's the thing. We are now ten years old. So when we commissioned the plant, you know, we have an RFP for the contractor, we had an RFP for the filters, we evaluated. Time. Now we only up, but we entered into an agreement with them that if we needed membranes in the next ten. It's basically down where it was. So that translates to about nineteen hundred dollars per membrane. Next year, if you don't. The price is gonna drop. They're gonna be thirty eight hundred membranes. So we've got an opportunity now to do the membranes. We know we need some. So this is what. Have to make it probably be better than I can explain it by. So we've got train one, the member thousand has forty eight membranes in it, and they're all doing fairly well. Taking that train to sixty because there's spots for twelve more. All the trains have spots for for more, twelve more. Take the forty eight that are used and we would break them out by repurposing them. We would put twelve. They're gone and and recycle basically back into use. We don't have old and new, so you can't mix with them. It's just, it'll be a natural fit. They can go into there. We would take the remaining twenty four and we would put them where the eighteen dirty. Forty eight of the. Good shape used membranes and redistribute them in the plant. That would give us more capacity. Available. We're basically saying, let's take the old ones, we'll populate at the second stage. Put these ones here to fill that bank. Definitely used here. We've upgraded these ones now to gently used and these would all be brand new. So it's probably our best move to. Going forward, proposal coming forward to versus sixty membranes or be only up at the fixed price. And the advantages would be lower wear. So they're gonna work less hard. So it's easier on them. Uh, it increases the overall capacity of the plants. We can, it is our. We're falling behind at certain points. I know through the fires we were a little bit. This would give us more capacity in the plant. If we crank up, we'd be able. A little easier, just kind of low and slow. So that's all we got. A little frame for tonight. Do you have any questions?
For twenty twenty five of two hundred and forty thousand dollars. So this isn't a change in the budget by any means. It's just getting councils. A resolution.
That's amazing.
Yeah, I I think it's a good idea. I mean, if we had a ten year old express. Gone dramatically just in the last three years. So I think really good thinking on this, Darryl. We gotta have a save.
Yes, you did, Chair. Uh, yeah, great job, Darryl. I remember when the water treatment plant went in, it was a big controversy over how long these filters were gonna last. Secure that price too. So, good job. Thanks.
Anyone else? Great job, Darryl. Thank you. That's great plan. Okay.
Okay.
Right away.
Thank you. Hey, moving along, uh, we are. First of all, council, anything they want to talk about this. Um, I will. I went on a tour at the Sickoos Public Center. And. There and do the tour. The Brian gave me the tour and it's the landscape of the building. And and Douglas Cardinals will try to get a job. So looking forward to. That's me, hey.
Uh, interesting question to the chair. It's asked me to the left stat. When are we so, uh, first. The five sort of building fifty four minutes, five sort of building commercial.
Attention today, you know, conversation with Jim that there are. They've been advised. Has changed. So and that comes from CMHC. So Jim is getting busy to, um. Fund this project. Uh, what they're being told is that, um, Sickoos is being looked upon as a small community and. The criteria, being looked at a lot, a lot more close. So there's gonna be a conversation that Jim's gonna set up, right? And he's. That's that put in motion a number of conversations that we'll have to have over the coming weeks. So that's kind of. That's the review. Right on track. It's just now this comes as a surprise to us and absolutely a shock to them. So. Just of finding out what their options are.
And so it's just, I mean, they're the lender. So I guess if you can convince the lender that there's, you're gonna get the. At least something they're gonna work out on, but yeah, they're gonna need the lender to give them the money without that, then basically what. Track, but we don't know.
We won't know until that's resolved.
Counselor.
Um, we kind of, I I remember talking about this with Kelly and we should, I I think we probably, um, it would have been wise to actually invite. Some security of of some sort, whether it be five hundred dollars or whatever. If we could, I think if they could have went to the bank with that with this. Having caught off guard, and it's not just sick ones. It's all, they're not a big problem in Ontario right now.
Yeah, I think we could probably, you know, start looking at a program like that where to see what the interest is. So would would that be. So it can, yeah. Okay, no speech. Um, yeah, I just wanted to say. These are species workshop held out at the water think realm on the Amis River. And, um, it was, uh. Fire burned all through there. So it was really a a learning experience about the impact of the wildfire. The effect on the Amis River as well, and they, um. Effective, you know, affecting salmon run. So it was a really interesting, uh, lot learned there, uh, from from that in terms of of the wildfire. Very interesting. Okay, on that note, I'll, Councilor Bushell, go ahead.
So you just want to, uh, make Daryl get help on the.
Uh, to the chair, other than a whole bunch of ribbon, I've replaced, uh, I'm not sure exactly where they are, they're definitely.
I like ribbon. It's very pleasant. It's exciting. Okay, let's go with. Yeah, so the chair, it was scheduled for, yes.
They they said that.
Yeah, I saw it.
Yeah, so they will be scheduled once the election passes.
Okay, so we will still do it. Can't sort of finish.
Different projects. They they hunt me down and ask me their their concerns, uh, address their concerns and, uh, questions, um. And went to the, um, Orange Shirt Day Parade and Gathering at the Splat Scene Center. It's a growing movement. It's four years in, and it was good to see that it's, um, that many people packing out the center that, um. It's very good. So thanks for that.
Switch. Um, yeah, so I did the Orange Shirt Day in Enderby, uh. From them out with us. Then there was actually an Orange Shirt Day at the Red Barn in the evening, um, and the chamber, uh, helped with. First Nations ladies. So it was very cool. It was very well done, and that'd be really neat to see that grow. Um, and it was neat. They did it at night, so you didn't have to pick one or. And Gord and and about different recreation things. We had a friends' binless and meeting, um, and both of those. Really need to sit down and and kind of get different stories and and what's going on there. Um. And I think that's.
Question. You the chair, uh, thank you. Yeah, it's been a long time since I regularly counseled me in September eleven, so, uh, yeah, a lot. They had a big open house, and it was really all abandoned, and it was, uh, it's pretty, pretty cool to see all those little youngsters running around in there. And the staff are so friendly. Uh, my aunt's gonna head bike to the fire hall to do a tour there, and, uh, I was very, very impressed with. And, uh, and it's great to see all the, all the, you know, crew there, and great to see Brett still there. Brett's, uh, you know, he's pitching in and just, he's just. Been with him for a long time. And just to remind everybody, he's having, uh, an open house in public on the nineteenth October. That's on, uh, next. It's on social media or something. Um, I just calling, I attended a Sneeze meeting, uh, one night, one evening, uh. Types of, uh, uh, channel studies and putting that all together so that all of the people in the channel will be able to to utilize all. And, uh, not get some of these new studies pushed down or or, uh, uh, these vendors push at us. So that's going along. The, um, Nicole and Todd and something that, uh, the problems in regards to, uh, Todd's retaining wall and. The, um, it's just a personal wish wishlist, I thought. But anyways, we're we're waiting to hear back from. Been at UBCM from the sixteenth to the twentieth, so that was really, uh, really enlightening. I mean, a lot of sir. Um, been to a few developer meetings, uh, Big Villas up in the hill, regards to some Bruton Bridge concerns. Well, lots of special council meetings on hiring a new CEO. That was, uh, pretty, uh, pretty, uh, pretty new wording. In regards to user groups in Darryl, and yeah, that was, uh, and Darryl also was with us and had our, had our eyes open in some of the user groups concerns. Uh, September, so that went really well. And, uh, yeah, working with some new developers on some stuff.
That's part of our surveillance.
I was just gonna say, I think you heard it all, so let me.
Beach, okay. Um, yeah, there, there, other than the workshop, which I already talked about, uh, uh. Um, I also attended UBCM, and, um, I also entered Orange Shirt Day, which was. The increase in the numbers of of orange shirts there on that was just and and there. Was just amazing. So, um, that was, um, really good. Sorry, I had my list up and now I'm, okay. But, uh, the coordination and, uh, execution of a bit of the senior fifty five plus teams, uh, when they were. Um, okay, who else did I do? Oh, um, with Counselor McKay and also. The Capel, uh, ninety seven highway intersection in the corner there, just kind of site visit at this time. Here's to be happening in terms of ninety seven highway, because they've already, um, disturbed, uh, the. Better not, they were actually putting in a turning light. I don't, we we both, we had some observations that that I'd like to. About some of the issues that that we observed and and some of our questions and signage things and stuff. So that's coming. It'll come. Three of us, because we did the site visit together online. So that's my report. Thank you.
And we did a walk and, uh, had lunch there. That was a big turnout, huge turnout. Um, and then did on, uh, ten, uh. Um, that centered in tour medical center, UBCM, pizza day, uh, and I would. But, um, there's quite a deficiency this that's beyond routine maintenance, so.
Okay, thanks, Counselor McKay. I'm gonna echo some of these, uh, uh. We met with Minister, uh, Minister Ferris and enter and asked her for any more extra money she could. Press. Of course, we will see if there's, there's, um, uh, an opportunity there to act to, to our.
Morning, what is this, the third one? Elementary Secretary Fisher is.
Good pleasure. Yes, thank you. Because this is something that threatens our water out here in just a few shop or right across town. So, um, they. Saying that we were there for the last ten years sitting in front of them asking for a solution. So I think both will start to make more noise matters. Just a VC problem. It's a Canadian problem. And it's a big one. It's our water. It's our drinking, it's our resources. I found UBCM a little bit shocking for me. We've got, um, we've had so many disasters, wildfire. Like handing out money, but throwing, um. Uh, barricades in front of finishing it off. And first. Studies that are not necessary to put their home back on their property in the same space it was before. They need to do. Pay to have all of this done. So not only are they faced with the devastation of losing their home, they're. They can put their house back where it was before, because the government's gonna be a scheme or. But. Armed studies, just things that you would think a province working together to get people back in their homes. So that was one of my takeaways from UBCM was listening to the folks that have been devastated and fired. Well. Sarah and the Eagles, Counselor Rich and Counselor McKay, Counselor Evans and Counselor Page. Um, thank you. That was. Those that didn't make it home and, um, hope. We can certainly, certainly, uh, recognize upset. Like, um. Um, so, um, yeah, that was good. It was, um, it was a lot to listen to some of those, some of. People get involved, more involved. Um, I went to the Sneeze meeting last night, uh, Darryl. And so those folks are moving forward and and do have some good plans in place. So, um, that's good to see. And it's, uh, yeah, they, um, they're. Big issues and redevelopment, section elevens and front counter issues. Um, also, I can't believe that we haven't. Well, I just want to share, um, because I think someone did ask, um, it was a success and the triad. Well, I just want to share, um, because I think someone did ask, um, it was a success at the triathlon at Old Town Bay. Event for that space because it works so well. So that's always positive to, to hear that, you know, we'll have to deliver. And that's it for me. But I think Counselor Evans wanted to add something.
I just wanted to say how excited I was, like Gord said, dude. But I'm really glad with the result.
Excellent. Yes, we'll get into that later in the regular council.
I was meeting with CP and I was extremely disappointed with the CP rep Mike, uh, basically actually not acknowledging the coal dust coming off the trains. Uh, I, I was hoping you would take it steps to mitigate or stop it, but not to the equals them. I said, well, why didn't you spray your trains? And well, we sprayed the trains to, uh, stabilize the load so it doesn't shift pretty. Well, I think that's great to the base side of that. Very disappointing. Coal dust, white coal dust was his response.
Yeah, so, um, I brought that those gender items as well. So, uh, we've asked the folks that are right there on the channel to be the coal dust police. Uh, take pictures if you can and start making phone calls right then and there. So that, we can't change what happened in the past. Changes to the process apparently. So, but moving forward, we can definitely fight it moving forward because they're saying that it's been taken.
Communicating out about, uh, CPKC Community Connect. And that is a way that residents or business owners can report to sources to test and then to take action from that point. And so I believe that was shared also with, um, Sycamore's Chamber of Commerce and states to Canton that.
Okay, just one quick, okay.
The, the process of them determining if there's saying there's coal dust. Yeah, that, that carries a lot of weight.
Hey, much beach.
Yeah, I just wanted to say that I remember actually come to them with a complaint about coal dust that didn't initiate testing. That's what I remember. That you're getting out of letting.
Okay, now we're going to have, we're going to go into public, um, just raise your electronic hand.
They all go.
Leslie, go ahead.
The boat as a cool, I won't go down with the, those coal train going because we've had pieces fall on our boat. So is that what you're talking about? We literally will not. I refuse to go under that, that track of the coal train's going. Okay, Sarah. Sorry. And yeah, and so if that happens, that will instigate, you know, them.
Slash, if you want to, or if you catch it.
If you see it, even if you see it, like information to provide to CPKC.
Yeah, thanks, Leslie. Um, anyone else online?
And, uh, I apologize more for the actual cell phone thing. It's a little embarrassing too, so.
Apology accepted.
Is a general observation of being here at Sycamore's the past couple of years, seasonal, but I'm kind of tall timed out and everything. Just the lights and it's just beautiful. And so whoever's like in charge of that, taking care of that and everything, it just, it has a good feel here. So.
Greatness. Thanks. Bit to hear. Thank you very much. There's a lot of, a lot of, uh, a lot of folks in town. So, yeah, that's, it is. Thank you. Um, anyone else up there with their hand up? Okay, we're gonna call. Counselor Page, Counselor Rich, all in favor? And we are done.